But you'll be glad we did.
This is Barney and Premier Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram, and I'm here to nip this sale in the bud. Hello folks, this is Greg Anthony, Sales Manager at Premier Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram in Troy, Alabama. Offering discounts up to $15,000. Let's nip that. Zero percent financing up to 72 months. We gotta nip that. Barney, $5,000 over Kelly Blue Book for your trade-in. You're killing the competition. Barney!
Troy Cable is the leader in smart home security, giving you solutions to monitor, protect, and automate your home. Troy Cable Security keeps your property safe with 24/7 professional monitoring and emergency response. Control thermostats and lighting remotely, which allow options for saving energy and money. Control access to your home remotely with integrated controls for door locks. You can even add our smart home cameras, which allow you to see what you care about instantly. Troy Cable Security. You love them, protect them.
Welcome to Good News and Interviews with Forrest Tree Lee. Today's Monday, May the 10th. I have Cole Sanders here with me on the set. But first of all, I'd like to thank some new sponsors to our show. Wallace Pump and Supply, I want to thank Cotton Chip Wallace. You can call them at 735-2338 for all your water supply needs, your pipes and things of that nature. Also would like to thank Campbell's Produce. Mr. Buck and Ms. Diane, you can call them at 807-0105 for all your peas, butter beans, tomatoes, okra, squash, boiled peanuts. They're located on 231 on your left, right past Sisters. I also would like to thank Kelly, Kelly's Tire. I've been doing business with Kelly tires for years and years. If I need a new set of tires, that's who I go see. I want to thank Rex and Ms. Nail Grant. You can call them at 566-1430. And also, I want to feature and mention the Brundage Country Club. On May the 22nd and 23rd, I've seen you out there before, you brothers. There's a two-man scramble on May the 22nd and 23rd at the Brundage Country Club. There will be a cow cutter on Saturday night. There will also be supper on Saturday night. You can contact Mr. Donnie Mobley at 372-2943, or at 735-3680. Also, Abby Parks Manual was scheduled to have a golf clinic for youth this afternoon at the Brundage Country Club. She counseled it yesterday thinking that we'd have bad weather, but that has been scheduled to next Monday afternoon between 4:00 and 7:00. You can go to Abby Parks Manual Golf on Facebook and pull up the link, fill out the registration, or you can show up next Monday at the Brundage Country Club for a youth clinic ages 6 through 14. Want to feature Pond Stalker 2. You can call Jim Mullis at 403-2582. Pond Stalker 2, they can do fish stocking for you. They can put in fountains, windmills, surface aerators, all kinds of things, turtle traps. They're featuring a new device called the Pond Buddy. It's an aquatic fertilizer distributor. So call Jim at 403-2582. Bonnie Plant Farms, I mean, not Bonnie Plant Farms, but I love Bonnie plants. My mother's first name was Bonnie. But I want to thank the Pike Farmers Co-op, I want to feature them. They have locations in Troy and in Goshen, Alabama. Go see Danny in Goshen, or Jeffrey, or Mr. Jeff in Troy, Alabama. They have Bonnie plants, seed, feed, fertilizer. They have fence posts, wires, fencing tools. They have tack for horses. You can get your soil tested, bring in your soil to get it tested if you have a garden. They've got corral panels. They've got this kind of lotion, it's called Two Old Goats. I bought some the other day. It's got a, it's good for arthritis. And when you get my age, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. But it's a lotion that you can buy right there at the counter. They've got frozen stuff there to buy that you can cook. They've got frozen catfish fillets, whole catfish, chicken fingers, hush puppies, french fries, stuffed crab, jalapeno poppers, biscuits, and of course, I believe they've got some quail out there too. So go see the friendly folks at Pike Farmers Co-op in Goshen. I want to thank last week, this hat, I've got a horse cart, right size hat, head. In other words, I've got a big old head. But this is a big green egg cap that the Hartley Boys left last week. Go see them at Southern Grill and Patio. You can call them at 770-0575. Father's Day is coming up, 4th of July. Also, I want to thank being on the show, 4B Fitness. That's what it's titled. And of course, we've already mentioned Abby Peters Golf. You can sign up for Abby, her golf instruction online. Just type in Abby Peters Manual Golf, and you can find it. Tonight, I want to welcome to the show Mr. Cole Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Good afternoon, Cole. Good evening. And your hometown is Troy.
It is.
Tell us where you went to high school, what year you graduated, and your college career.
Well, I went to high school at Charles Henderson. And I kind of got into, like, in graphic design. And I really got into art in middle school. Ms. Sullivan was my teacher then. And then on in high school, I had Ms. Smith, which later turned into Ms. Walden, who was my, who was my teachers in high school.
There's Jennifer Sullivan at the middle school, and Mrs.
Was Ms. Smith.
But she's Mrs. Walden now?
No, 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 no. Ms. Smith retired, and then Ms. Walden came and took her spot.
So you had two at the high school?
Yes.
Okay.
And they had a big influence on me earlier on during, during high school. In college, I went to Troy University, and I met Ed Noriega, and he, he had a big influence on me. He took me overseas to Italy where we did, I designed, me and him, and one other student designed all the graphic material for the dance and art festival in, in future Santa Italy. And this was a study abroad trip that we went on, and...
How many students went on that trip, Cole? Do you remember about how many went?
There was a bunch of Troy students from different departments. I know in the design department, it was just me and one other, one other student in the graphic design department. But I know a lot of dance majors went to participate in that, as well as theater and music, and, and I want to say journalism as well.
All right, Cole, if you will, tell everyone who your mother and your dad and your grandparents are, and all that stuff, and your siblings?
Yeah, my, my mom is Sheila Compton. She was a, she was a Baxley. And my dad is, is David Sanders. My dad's dad is, I mean, yeah, my dad's dad is Dan Sanders. I don't know if y'all might know him, but...
Yeah, I remember, well, I've heard of him, because he's, he's got a brother named Roy and Ray, and married, and, you know, I, I used to work full-time with Roy.
Okay.
If you ever met him. But in your, what about your dad is, your dad is a twin?
My dad is a twin to Daniel Sanders.
Okay. And your dad's artistic. Tell us some stuff that your dad does.
Yeah, my, my dad has, I think I get a lot of my artistic ability from my dad. He, he does a lot of, he works with PVC, and he, he paints, he paints on them. He'll, he'll burn them and weld them into different types of, of birds, and, and he'll do butterflies, cut butterflies in it with PVC and paint on them. And he also does a little bit of woodwork, making, making benches out of, out of bedsets.
Okay, I love bedsets. All right, if you will, show us a couple of your things you have there, Cole.
This is, this is my brother Sheldon Sanders.
Now, how did...
I'll take his picture and use it as reference, and then find all the, all the strong shadows and dark points, and, and kind of just follow along where...
You recently did one for Kara Carter Hudson. We had a benefit for her this past week, weekend was a week ago, and you did that for us. And we had some t-shirts made up that said Kara's Chips. And well, thank you for doing that. And what's the other, how long was, does that take you to do right there? Hold Sheldon up again. How long does that actually take, the whole process?
This process takes me roughly around three to four hours to, to kind of make sure it's a good, smooth finished product.
There's some other stuff on the set. Puppy dog. Who are those two? Is that a Sanders right there?
It is. That's my, that's my cousin Dalton Sanders.
I know Dalton. I talk to Dalton.
And his wife Danielle.
That's fantastic. That's black and white.
It's black and white.
Now, who's puppy dog?
That is...
You know, is that your...
No, that's not my puppy dog. Who did I do that puppy dog for?
That's a great, black and white. You call that again, what's that called? That design, what's that technique called?
It's, it's called an illustration using, using Illustrator.
All right, well, show this other thing that you have here. This is your other brother.
This is my other brother, John Baxley Sanders.
He's a senior, okay.
He is a senior. He's graduating this semester.
There's some more there on the set, too.
And what I, this is, this is done with Photoshop. And I take multiple images, and will cut them all out, and then I'll combine them, combine them onto a file, and put a few effects on there, and do it that, that sort of way.
How long does that take to do that particular?
This is a long process also. I would say, from the time I start to the time I finish, it would also take about four to five hours.
Those are some t-shirts that you designed, and some other stuff. The Trojan Shield, what is the Trojan Shield down there? Armor up for Troy? Is that for Troy University?
Yeah, that was my senior, that was my senior thesis project at Troy University. I got into, I got into 3D printing, and I learned how to model on that a little bit, and made these face shields to kind of, to kind of go against wearing a face mask, because, you know, when, when teachers give presentations, or students give presentations, it was kind of hard to give a presentation with a mask on. So I wanted to, I'd rather wear a face shield since if we had to wear one.
That's Devon Christian up top right corner, that people say he's a senior at Pike Level Arts, playing for the state championship Wednesday. All right, how, how can someone contact you, Cole, for, for this type of artwork that you do?
You can find my, contact me through my website. There's a contact location, and it's davidcoleanders.com.
DavidColeSanders.com.
Yes. And you can also find me on Facebook or Instagram. And you can just find me at David Cole Sanders there also.
Okay. Well, listen, we got good news. You just accepted a job. Can you, are you allowed to announce that?
I think so.
Okay.
I, I did just accept a job at Alpha Insurance as a, as a UX UI designer, which is user interface, user experience. And that would be, that will entail making, designing and developing the, their website, just make it more user-friendly, and...
Well, great. That is fantastic. Well, I, I want to thank you for coming on the show, and, you know, I, I'm so excited for you, and, you know, you, it just seems like yesterday, you were in the middle school, when we were at the middle school together, and...
That's right.
You just, you graduated in 2004?
2016, I graduated.
2016, and you recently graduated from Troy University. Was it last week, or?
No, I graduated in December, 2020.
So I know everybody, the whole Sanders family, and the Baxley family are excited about your new adventure. You'll be going to Montgomery each day, is that correct?
That's correct.
You'll start in a couple of weeks. Well, listen, Cole, I want to wish you the very best, and thank you for coming to the show. And ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a short break. I want to thank our sponsors, Troy Bank and Trust Company. We also want to thank Sticky Frog, Piggly Wiggly, State Farm, Bryant Smith and his agency, The Chicken Shack of Luverne, and Home Gallery. And we'll be back in just a few minutes with Good News and Interviews with Forrest Tree Lee.
A personal touch, a high level of trust. Whether it's checking and savings accounts, personal or business loans, or our local friendly service. That's what Troy Bank and Trust customers expect. But now we offer more. Free identity theft protection for our new and existing customers, protecting your family's time, money, and good name from identity theft. Because protecting your identity is now a big part of our identity. If you've had an accident or just want a new look for your vehicle, come see us at Troy Paint and Body, where we do it right the first time. Our staff has more than 100 years combined experience and can handle repairs and paint work on any make or model. We also offer a lifetime guarantee as long as you own your vehicle. Now that shows we stand behind our work. And our 24-hour towing service means we're here when you need us. So come see us at Troy Paint and Body, located on South Brundage Street in Troy beside the post office. Troy Paint and Body, where we may meet by accident, but you'll be glad we did.
This is Barney and Premier Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram, and I'm here to nip this sale in the bud. Hello folks, this is Greg Anthony, Sales Manager at Premier Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram in Troy, Alabama. Offering discounts up to $15,000. Let's nip that. Zero percent financing up to 72 months. We gotta nip that. Barney, $5,000 over Kelly Blue Book for your trade-in. You're killing the competition. Barney!
Troy Cable is the leader in smart home security, giving you solutions to monitor, protect, and automate your home. Troy Cable Security keeps your property safe with 24/7 professional monitoring and emergency response. Control thermostats and lighting remotely, which allow options for saving energy and money. Control access to your home remotely with integrated controls for door locks. You can even add our smart home cameras, which allow you to see what you care about instantly. Troy Cable Security. You love them, protect them.
Welcome back to Good News and Interviews with Forrest Tree Lee. Our next guest is Nash Rutledge. Welcome to the show, Nash. Nash is a, his hometown's Niceville, Florida.
Yes, sir.
Nash, if you will, tell us about your hometown, and, and what all activities you were involved in?
So, like I said, my name's Nash Rutledge. I grew up in Destin, Florida. Moved down there at a real young age. So just like any kid, I grew up, well, in the area, I grew up going to the beach all the time, always fishing. Got an older brother. He was thankfully an athlete as well. I got dragged along to all of his baseball tournaments growing up. So growing up, I was big into baseball. Then I fell in love with football. Football kind of owned my life for a good amount of time.
Were you a receiver, a tight end, or a free safety?
I played defensive end.
Okay.
Played all of the lineman positions.
Okay.
And then...
For Niceville High School?
Well, yes, sir. At Niceville, played defensive end there. I was coached by the late Kevin Green. I'm sure you know he is, Hall of Famer.
Okay.
Then...
He played at Auburn?
He played at Auburn.
Okay.
And then he went to Green Bay, Long Southern.
That was your head coach?
That was my position coach.
Your position coach?
Yes, sir. So I was lucky enough to be coached by a Hall of Famer.
That's right.
That's a pretty cool experience. Then I didn't pick up throwing the shot put and discus until my junior year of high school.
Okay.
So I...
Well, who did, who, did who recruit you to do that? Did the track coach find you?
So...
Who, how did that happen?
That happened through just kind of unfortunate events. I never did track besides my eighth grade year of middle school. So I had, I had a little bit, and then a baseball fell through. The receiving coach for football teams, the head track coach, he said, "Come on out, we'd love to have you." Went out there, and then I had a great throws coach. Her name was Emily Webb. The, she...
Is that your high school?
She is the throws coach at Niceville High School.
Okay. Emily, say her name one more time.
Webb. W-E-B-B.
Is she still there?
She's still there. She, Niceville just, I have to throw them out there. They just won the, the 4A men's state championship, and took second place for the women's at state. So she is creating great athletes.
Now, throwing, your height is what, 6'3", 6'4"?
Yes, sir, around there.
6'3", 6'4". So the advantage right off the bat, with a good frame, is your height helps a lot with the throws. In high school, what all did you throw?
In high school, I just threw shot put and discus.
Okay. Did they have javelin in Florida?
They added javelin the year after I graduated.
They don't throw the hammer, do they, in high school?
No.
Okay.
No, sir.
That's too dangerous. Now, in the collegiate level, you were recruited by what schools in track?
I was very under-recruited. I was recruited by South Alabama, and then Troy University.
Troy University.
That was, that was the only two.
Now, you are by classification a junior, but a sophomore athletically.
Yes, sir.
All right, what all events have you participated in since you've been a track person, player, you know, an athlete, track athlete?
I, I did, I threw the hammer. I, not very well. I tried it my freshman year, just like everyone does. Never picked it up. I threw the javelin in one meet, just to make a sanctioned NCAA meet, just so we have enough people. It was the last time I ever touched it. And, and I do the shot put and discus primarily.
Okay. Now, of those two events, which one is your most?
I, I enjoy throwing the shot put the most. Yes, sir.
Now, upcoming this week is the golf, not golf south conference, but the Sun Belt Conference Track and Field Championships.
Yes, sir.
Tell us a little bit about that, and where it'll be held.
So we are leaving Wednesday morning to go over to South Alabama. And we will start the meet on Thursday, and we'll finish up on Saturday. So it's a three-day meet. And it's all of the track and field programs from the Sun Belt Conference.
Okay. And I went to graduate school at South and received my masters there in 1984. Fred Scafini was on staff there, but Don Jeffrey, Dr. Don Jeffrey, he kind of, he was here at Troy University in the Health and Physical Education Department, and he, he helped guide about eight or 10 of us from Troy University to the University of South Alabama. So I'm a little bit Jaguar, mostly Trojan. And I want to thank Dr. Jeffrey for that, and all others here at Troy. Now, influences, your, your track coaches here at Troy University, who are those? Especially, who's your throw coach here at Troy?
So, the head coach, the head coach is Coach Mark Davis. He is awesome. And then my actual event coach is Michelle Clayton. She is incredible. She knows what she's talking about.
Now, did Coach Clayton, did she throw somewhere?
Yes, sir.
Where's her, what's her background?
Her background is honestly overqualified. She has competed and trained and coached some of the best throwers there have been.
Okay. Now, the, now, if you do well at the Sun Belt Conference, are there qualifying things for the NCAA tournament as well?
Yes, sir. So it goes from the Sun Belt Conference meet, and then if you qualify, you have to throw or run a certain distance mark, and you will then advance on to the regionals.
And where were the regionals, do we know yet?
I believe Jacksonville?
Jacksonville, Florida?
Yes, sir. Jacksonville, Florida.
All right. Now, track members that will be going to the University of South Alabama, both men and women, about how many athletes does Troy University have that will, that are on the track team, to begin with, and how, you know?
So, we have, we have around 120 people total on the team. That's men and women. And then, yeah, it's a very large team.
Wow.
But, so that's that. And then, actually traveling to the conference meet, we kind of cut it almost in half.
Okay.
For the elite championship meets.
Right, I got you. Now, where all have y'all competed this year, year? Y'all have a fall and a spring?
Yes, sir. So track and field is one of the interesting sports where we have two seasons. We compete year-round. We have the indoor season, which is more of the winter time. And all of our meets, for the most part, we're at the Birmingham Crossplex. That's one of the few indoor facilities in the area. And then for outdoor, we would usually travel out to Penn, and...
That's in Pennsylvania?
Yes, sir.
Penn Relays?
Yes, sir.
Wow, that's big.
That's...
The Penn Relays.
That's a big one. This year, we went to Mississippi State. We go to all the SEC meets, yes, sir. We went to Alabama.
Georgia? Did I see Bulldog somewhere in your...
We did not go there, no, sir.
Okay.
Uh, that, the Bulldog Relays...
That was Starkville?
Yes, sir.
I got you.
And then we went to Tuscaloosa for a meet.
Okay.
South Alabama, just kind of the normal Sun Belt.
Now, track and field is very big in the state of Florida.
Yes, sir.
Now, your goal in life, after you graduate and all that, what, what's your ambition to do? I asked you, I met him at Bird's Drugs, by the way, this morning.
Picking up some breakfast.
And I want to thank Bird's Drugs. I love Bird's Drugs. That's where, guilty, that's where I go most every day. But go ahead.
So ideally, once I get done with competing in college, I want to eventually open up my own gym to be able to train younger athletes and prepare them for the next levels. Kind of get them to understand what it takes, like amount of effort it takes to get to the next level to accomplish their goals.
Yeah, from, for a young person watching the show, the first thing would be, make sure you get your education. Stay focused, take care of your body, you know, and, you know, and, and take it one day at a time, and try to get bigger, stronger, faster, whatever the case may be. And I meant to mention this earlier, but in just a little bit, when I prompt you, we're going to give away 18 holes of free golf with a cart for two at the Brundage Country Club. You got to redeem this certificate Tuesday through Friday. If you want to go ahead and call now, you can. On the screen, it's 770-3352. But this is a free round of golf for two people, 18 holes. And you can redeem it Tuesday through Friday at the Brundage Country Club. It's located on Saratoga Boulevard, about eight, 10 miles from here. And we're going to give that away tonight. And we got another feature coming up. It's Lenny Traywick and Kathy Stockstill and Mr. Bob Perdue. We recorded that event about two weeks ago at the Old Barn Restaurant, and they're a new sponsor. Ms. Amy Chandler, that's Flowers Relative. They'll be on next week, Flowers Relative will. But Nash, I want to thank you for coming, and I want to wish you and the Trojans the best of luck. I, I coached track and field when I was in Georgia at a middle school, at Whitesboro Middle School in La Grange, Georgia. With Ed Truphe. But I actually loved it because you can, you can recruit within your walls of your school, and you know who might be fast. Welcome to Good News and Interviews with Forrest Lee. Go ahead.
We were calling to enter in the drawing for the golf.
Well, who, who, you are the winner. Who is this?
I'm Sheldon.
Who?
I'm Sheldon.
Sheldon! Sheldon Sanders. Well, congratulations, big boy. And I hope you're having a good day, and say hello to your mother, Sheila. And I got your name written on it, and I'll get it to you, Sheldon.
All right.
All right, thank y'all for calling. All right? That's a little bit of delay. So we had a winner. But again, I want to thank you, Nash, for...
Yes, sir.
Like I was saying, I coached track and field for about two years, and then had to swap gears, but I really thoroughly enjoyed it. And I'm proud I met you this morning, and I want to wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a small break, a short break, and we'll be back in just a minute with Good News and Interviews with Forrest Lee.
A personal touch, a high level of trust. Whether it's checking and savings accounts, personal or business loans, or our local friendly service. That's what Troy Bank and Trust customers expect. But now we offer more. That's what Troy Bank and Trust customers expect, but now we offer more. Free identity theft protection for our new and existing customers. Protecting your family's time, money, and good name from identity theft. Because protecting your identity is now a big part of our identity.
If you've had an accident or just want a new look for your vehicle, come see us at Troy Paint and Body, where we do it right the first time. Our staff has more than one hundred years combined experience and can handle repairs and paint work on any make or model. We also offer a lifetime guarantee as long as you own your vehicle. Now, that shows we stand behind our work, and our twenty-four-hour towing service means we're here when you need us. So, come see us at Troy Paint and Body, located on South Brundage Street in Troy beside the post office. Troy Paint and Body, where we may meet by accident, but you'll be glad we did.
This is Barney and Premier Crouser Dodge Jeep and Ram, and I'm here to nip this sale in the bud.
Hello, folks. This is Greg Anthony, Sales Manager at Premier Crouser Dodge Jeep Ram in Troy, Alabama. Offering discounts up to fifteen thousand dollars.
Let's nip that.
Zero percent financing up to seventy-two months.
We gotta nip that.
Barney, five thousand dollars over Kelly Blue Book for your treat in.
You're killing the competition.
Barney!
Troy Cable is the leader in smart home security, giving you solutions to monitor, protect, and automate your home. Troy Cable Security keeps your property safe with twenty-four-seven professional monitoring and emergency response. Control thermostats and lighting remotely, which allow options for saving energy and money. Control access to your home remotely with integrated controls for door locks. You can even add our smart home cameras, which allow you to see what you care about instantly. Troy Cable Security, you love them, protect them.
Welcome back to Good News and Interviews with Forrest Tree Lee. Um, if you've been watching Troy Cable, too, uh, click on it throughout the day and at night, and you'll find different segments that have been recorded or that could be live. But a couple of weeks ago, uh, I went to the Barn Restaurant and ran into Lenny Traywick, Kathy Stockstill. Uh, Lenny, um, you know, he gives guitar lessons on the square in downtown Troy at Flat Tops and Fiddles. And Flat Tops and Fiddles is a sponsor along with Lenny. Uh, Flat Tops and Fiddle, Fiddles, the owner's, uh, Don Brown. But one of the students that Lenny has is a young lady by the name of Kathy Stockstill, who is a junior at Pike Liberal Arts School. She's very talented, and she along with Bob Perdue, who's, who plays the harmonica, were at the Barn Restaurant, and they alternate with another group every Thursday night. Well, this particular night, I was there. I interviewed Amy and Lenny and some other, uh, people. Uh, but Amy is the owner. Want to thank the Old Barn Restaurant for having us. But, um, and you're gonna see a recording of that for the next few minutes, and then I'll come back to you. So, ladies and gentlemen, it's, uh, Good News and Interviews at the Barn Restaurant.
And he gives lessons on downtown on the square in Troy, Alabama at Flat Tops and Fiddles. Right here in Goshen, Alabama, tonight, we have a treat. This is Lenny Traywick, and he gives lessons on downtown on the square in Troy, Alabama at Flat Tops and Fiddles. Uh, Mr. Don Brown's in the audience, too. Uh, in the middle, we have Miss Kathy Stockstill. Her nickname is Sunshine. She's a junior at Pike Liberal Arts School in Troy, Alabama. Uh, beautiful voice. And on the far left is Mr. Bob Perdue from Luverne, Alabama. He's the, he's the man of many harmonicas. And we'd like to thank the Barn for having us, and, uh, you can see, uh, Lenny and different people singing every Thursday night live here at the Barn in Goshen, Alabama.
Gary Garrett.
Gary Garrett, okay. And, uh, want to thank everybody for watching, and you can see this later on Troy Cable, Channel Two, in Troy, Alabama. And we want to thank Julie Fleming, our, uh, camera person in Troy Cable. And, uh, this is Forrest Lee, and thank y'all, Lenny, for playing for us. Ladies and gentlemen, we're live at the Barn Restaurant here in Goshen, Alabama. And with me is Lexi and her mother, Amy. Uh, you have a beautiful place here, Amy, and the food is delicious, and I'm gonna let you say a few things about the barn restaurant.
It has been an absolute blast being opened and having great people in our lives. Mr. Lenny, sweet, little, beautiful...
Kathy Stockstill. She's a junior.
Amazing. Absolutely amazing. I think, when, when we, how old were you when you first started?
Oh, goodness.
I mean, you were like...
When I first started here, I don't know.
But she seemed so grown up, so grown up. Bob, my love, Rita, I absolutely adore the ground she walks on, so, and you. I mean, you're here every...
From the land of Goshen, yeah. Yeah, come here, come here, Lexi. Yeah, but anyway, the Barn Restaurant is open on Thursday nights, Friday nights, Saturday nights, and they open at Sunday. What time you are open on Sunday?
Ten thirty to two.
Ten thirty to two. The food is excellent. It's right down here in Goshen, Alabama. And a little bit about the heritage, her dad, Johnny Taylor, and my dad grew up together in Luverne, Alabama. Uh, we want to thank, uh, Lenny Traywick for playing. Miss Kathy Stockstill, she's a junior at Pike Liberal Arts. This is Mr. Bob Perdue from Luverne. He's on the harmonica. And thank you for being here at the Barn, and this show will be played later, uh, throughout Troy Cable timeframe. Just check, uh, Channel Two from time to time, and we want to thank you for being with us here at the Barn Restaurant in Goshen, Alabama.
And hey, you're magical. I am obsessed with all of your gardening stuff. Anything you do, I'm obsessed with. I mean, I cannot take my eyes off of it.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
And the, um, Nutella.
The, Nutella, yeah. Well, that's, that's another story.
So, do you think you can tell? As from hell, blue skies remain. Can you tell a green field from a cornfield?
I had you. I had you. We can't change. We never. I had you. And you. We're now in the shoes. There ain't no control. There ain't no. There ain't no. I had you. With some. Jesus Christ. We never say. I had you. And you. We're now in the shoes. There ain't. There ain't no control. And there's nothing. No, there's nothing. Nothing that I would. I had you.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've been listening to the tunes of Lenny Traywick, Kathy Stockstill, and on harmonica, Mr. Bob Perdue. Want to thank them for being on the show tonight. Also want to thank Cole Sanders and my special guest, Mr. Rutledge, for being on the show. Want to thank Troy Bank and Trust Company. Want to thank Chimney Hot Sauces. Oh, Chimney Rock Hot Sauces. Go to www.chimneysauces.com and order you some hot sauce and some jalapeno hot sauce. Want to thank Troy Bank and Trust Company, Douglas Brothers, Pike Farmers Co-op, located in Goshen and here in Troy. Want to thank Home Gallery for being a sponsor. Wayla Vakons. You can go to Wayla Vakons and get all your vagon needs that you might need. They have syrup, they have all kinds of candies. They can send stuff across the world online. Want to thank Pond Stalker 2. They're introducing the Pond Buddy. Last week, we had the Big Green Egg folks on the show. The Hartley Brothers, want to thank them for coming and representing Southern Petio and Garden. And next week on the show, we'll have some special guests. Flowers Real Estate Team. That will be Billian and Kevin Flowers. Put flowers in your yard for all your needs as it deals with real estate and rentals. And also, we're gonna have the Pike Liberal Arts Cheerleader sponsors and coaches. They are, we're hoping to have them if we can work out the logistics. Ms. Katie Scott, Ms. Hannah Hickson-Jordan, and Ms. Brittany Royal. They took the JV adversity cheerleaders from Pike Liberal Arts and went to Orlando about a week ago and were declared the national champions in game day cheer. So congratulations to them. And I want to thank all the sponsors again. Thank you for joining us on this show. You can see the replays on Wednesday nights from 8 o'clock to 9 o'clock. And again, thank you for watching tonight's show and we'll see you next week on Good News and Interviews.